The Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting is now in order. Mr. Hurchala, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Here.
Terencey?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Calendino? Here, thank you. I would like to mention that both Councilman Deion and Councilman Ryan called in and are excused tonight. They each had things going on in their life that would not allow them to be at the meeting, so I was obliged to excuse them. At this time in the meeting, we'd like to open the floor to anyone from the public who has comments for items listed on the agenda. Anyone from the public?
Would that be? No, not yet.
We have no unfinished business. Council members, in your packet, you will find all the consent business that we've listed tonight. Unless somebody has a request to have any item removed from consent, I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent business.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Motion by Mayor Pro temp Secora.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Townsend. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you. We have no correspondence. New business? I would like a motion to move up the Utica Lions sign request. It's listed on your agenda as being handled by Councilwoman Terencey, but we're fortunate tonight to have Mr. Bernie Hurchala, who will be making that request on behalf of the Utica Lions. Sir, if you could step to the microphone and give us your address, please. Make sure your green button's on the mic, too.
Yep, it's on.
Thank you.
Okay. You know what? My address, 46023 St. And, okay, my name is Bernie Hurchala, president of the Utica Lions Club. And on the September 24th, at the American Legion, we're going to have our annual steak and shrimp dinner. So, to advertise this a little bit more than we normally do, and we've never tried this before, we'd like permission to put four stand-up signs in various locations in the city. One would be at Cass and Han, one Cass and Auburn, one at Van Dyke and Han, and another one, if we can find a room, at Van Dyke and Hall Road. Our main mission is make money. That goes out all that. And we hope to get more money, because what we do with our money is we help unfortunate people who are in the city, then there are a few that we help, I mean, I don't want to come out like that, but anyway. And with our Christmas baskets coming up this year, we need to get some more money so we can apply more baskets. Got overwhelmed last year. So, anyway, there again, I'm looking for permission to put four stand-up signs in various places of the city. Thank you.
And, Mr. Hurchala, these are just like the normal 18-by-24-inch type?
Yeah, well, not even, there's...
Are they A-frames?
A-frames, thank you very much.
A-frames, okay.
I've been looking for that word all day.
Should've called me.
It's been a tough day. A-frames, I've got to remember that one. But, yeah, they're about yay-high. Now, how is that? That's four-foot, because I'm five-foot.
And how long would they be out?
For about a week. We won't, you know, we won't probably put them up till, no earlier than Saturday, because...
It's February the 18th through the 20th.
No, earlier than Saturday, we wouldn't have them. We'd probably got to get them out, check them out, make sure they're okay, because we might want to, just make sure they got the right stuff on it.
Any questions for Mr. Hurchala?
No, but my question is, as I'm thinking, do these fall into where we approved, we had certain places that we had approved to have...
That was for...
That was for solicitors.
Oh, okay.
Human bodies. I thought the same thing.
Okay, then we're good.
I'll make a motion to appri, to approve the Utica Lions Club having the A-frame for their steak and shrimp dinner, which will be held on September 24th. Signs to go up approximately a week before.
I support that.
Oh, got a vote yet.
Motion by Mayor Pro temp Secora, support by Councilwoman Townsend. Any further discussion?
No.
I'm sorry, Terencey?
We got the Ts right there.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
I do, this is personal. I have tickets, if anybody's interested, I grab tickets and steak and shrimp tickets, dinner tickets, that we are trying to sell. We also have, what Bernie neglected to say is that we help Leader Dog, we help the Silent Children Program, we help the blind children, the deaf and blind children, learn to swim, and, you know, we do so much. The Lions are such a good group, and that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you.
Doors open at 5:30, and then dinner...
Mr. Link?
On the same topic.
Can you speak, can you go to the mic, please?
I can.
I hope you can.
No, it's fine. Are the A-frames, the A-frames that are owned by the city that we're talking about? No.
They're your own?
No.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I should have probably put that on, Mike. Perfect. Yeah, we don't. I'm sorry I was late for the meeting. I would have known that. I didn't even make mention of it today. Oh, okay. But I, just, because I know that... They're your own. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurchala.
See you soon.
Go home before it rains.
Good luck.
It's coming. I just drove through.
He had a triple bypass, and he was telling...
All right, moving on with the primary reports, I get to go first. First item of discussion is the TAP grant for the Davis Street Bridge. I'd just like to bring council up to date on that. I talked to Sal from HRC. What we originally thought was only going to be a 5% match requirement from the city ends up for this particular grant. It is a minimum 20% city match. We were trying to get in on the October grant cycle. That simply isn't going to be possible based on the numbers. Our 20% match, which includes preliminary in construction engineering, which is not eligible for the grant, would bring our match number to $252,530. We're going to have to go looking for that. Unfortunately, that's a much larger amount than we anticipated. The good news is, it's still very close to what the Phase II long-term repairs estimate was, which was, I believe, $225,000. It is in your packet somewhere. But that project is kind of on hold right now. I told HRC, you know, we're going to be looking for additional grant opportunities to try to get up to that match number. Sal at HRC doesn't anticipate it being a problem, as there are several other cycles. I think the next earliest one would be in February, is that right, Mr. Link? So, it puts us a little bit behind, but it gives us a chance to try to find those funds. Does council have any questions on that? The next item is our Christmas tree lighting. Much happier news. We've kind of targeted December 11th, Saturday night, as the night to do the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. As most are aware, the last time we did this in 2019, it was a huge success. We did a large-format fireworks display. We had Santa Claus in. We also had a member of the Detroit Red Wings that came and helped us emcee. It was really a nice event for the city and our residents. So, we're looking to change it to a Saturday night this year, make it an even bigger affair. We've, I've already reserved the large electronic billboard on Hall Road for the week prior to the event to advertise it. Have a meeting with Santa Claus, and I believe Mrs. Claus, next week. They're coming in, and we've talked to some of our connections about getting a pretty big Detroit sports celebrity to come. We're actually talking to two different folks right now, so we think that we're going to be able to procure at least one of them. And we talked to the fireworks company today, in fact, and they committed, if it's approved by council, that they are available on December 11th. All the funding for this event was in our 2022 budget. As far as the fireworks, the gentleman said that the show that he, that we did in 2019 was a nine-minute show with pretty big shells. I think he said they were four-inch shells, which didn't really mean much to me. He said since 2019, the cost of the fireworks themselves have gone up quite a bit. He said that we could either keep the budget the same at $5,000, and either reduce the, you know, magnitude of the fireworks or the time, or if we wanted to up the budget, you know, a little bit to compensate for the costs, he said he would work with us in any way that we chose. So, I would be looking for two motions tonight. One, to authorize the Christmas lighting ceremo, Christmas tree lighting ceremony to be held on December 11th, 2021. And my second motion I'd be looking for is authorization to enter into a contract with ACE Pyro for fireworks displayed not to exceed $6,000.
So moved. Do they have to be separate motions?
I think so.
Probably should, yeah.
All right, I move to authorize the Christmas tree lighting ceremony to be held on December 11th, 2021.
Support.
Motion by Councilman O'Donnell, support by Councilwoman Terencey. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you. One other item I'd like to mention is thanking the resident graffiti committee and the residents who spent their weekend helping to whitewash the Davis Street Tunnel.
Yeah.
That would include Councilwoman Townsend, her son Tyler, her husband Claude, resident Ed Van Slambrook, Jack Shepard, Caro, and John Maronic. Councilwoman Townsend will give us more of a full report, but it was a great day, got a lot done, and I think we made a lot of folks happy. It was, we were having to warn many bikers, many, I don't even know what those things are, skateboards with one-wheel.
I don't know what they're called.
There was a whole armada of them trying to get through. We had to warn them that, you know, there was a lot of paint fumes in the tunnel, but everybody was very cheery about it, very cooperative.
More cheery when they came out?
Yeah. But it looks really nice, and Councilwoman Townsend will also give us an update about the future plans for that. So, at this point, I will hand it over...
Point of order, it's actually called a one-wheel?
A one-wheel?
A one-wheel.
And there were a lot of one-wheels that day, for sure.
Yes, there were, yes, there were.
Pretty on the nose, a one-wheel.
Yes, everything went well on Sunday. It was a lot of fun, did a lot of scrubbing, too, as well. There's a lot of painting. Looking forward to this Saturday, where we have so far 12 young high school artists committed to come down and help us paint something on the inside. Yesterday, we got notified about a graffiti mural artist who would like to participate on Saturday. So, he, him and I have been in touch a little bit, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what he's going to paint. He's going to do it on the south end, where the bridge is, so that there's some light there, and people can take pictures, so it's going to, we'll have a good base there. I'll say that. I think after Saturday, we should have a good base. So, it's pretty exciting. And we're getting such positive reviews from everybody that's going through the tunnel. And I just reiterated to people what was going to happen this Saturday, too, and everybody just loves it. I don't think, I don't think I had one negative comment. If I had one, it was because some people came to take pictures in the tunnel. And I said, "Come back next Saturday, you know, then we'll have some base for you." But, but that was the only negative comment that I had, because they were coming to actually take pictures. But otherwise, it was great, and I'm excited for Saturday.
Yeah, my lunchtime walk on, yesterday, on Monday, I, I walked through and...
Probably some markings already?
No, I'll add to the positive comments, looks fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And, thank you, and congrats, I suppose, Councilwoman?
Yeah, and I did get, it stirred up so much with people, that I have people already who want to volunteer in the spring to help whitewash the, the Riverbends Tunnel.
Oh, nice.
Because it really provoked a good discussion, so, pretty excited about that.
Good job.
It's cool, yeah.
Good job.
Thanks.
Fantastic.
I have something, Mayor.
Councilwoman Terencey?
Yes. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Andy Appleby, because he offered tickets to the whole city for the championship games this weekend. We went to one of them, the seats were wonderful, and that was just very generous of him, so I wanted to do a public thank you. I don't know how many people attended, but you did miss out on a decent game. And the other thing is, at Apple Fest this weekend, I was with a group of people who did not know that I was part of the city at all. You know, I was doing my volunteer work, and the people that I were, they started talking about, because it was with the money, they started talking about the Utica Police and Fire, and how good you are, and for 30 years, how you've always been there for us. So, I want to commend, I want to commend the Police and Fire for, you know, what you do, you know, they commented about how you drive them to the bank to make sure everything's safe. I don't know if we still do that or not, I think we do. But, you know, the, the Apple Fest Committee is very, very appreciative, and they had, and I told them, I said, "I'm a councilwoman, and I love to hear this." You know, I'm going to take it back, so, my hat's off to you guys.
Good to hear, thank you.
Yes, yeah, it was. And then the last thing is Chief Cody, thank you, thank you for the speed, the radar, it's called the radar sign on Utica Road, it's like, yeah, I appreciate it a lot.
Yep.
I don't know when it went up, because it wasn't up this morning, or this afternoon, because I've been up Utica Road several times today.
Late this afternoon.
Late this afternoon. So, I saw it on the way here, and I immediately slowed down.
From the reports, it appears over 80% of people that approached the sign, is that right, Sergeant Kloszny?
That's correct.
Yeah, about 80%.
Yeah, the sign's showing about an 80, 83% effectiveness to get people to actually slow down.
Actually, I do, I wasn't going up. It said 23, but I slowed down anyway. But, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just for verification, it's my intention to put out enforcement directly after our sign comes down. So, in the future, when people don't see the sign, they may see one of our officers, so...
I would, I would recommend that they continue to follow the good habits, right?
Yes. And if you can get one on River Vista at 3:30 in the afternoon. My street was like the Indy 500 again today. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right. Part of our council reports is supposed to be to give department, committee and commission reports. Does anyone have anything to share in that regards tonight?
Not yet, tomorrow.
Okay.
Planning was canceled due to lack of interest. No, there were agenda items, no agenda items.
Moving on, nothing from planning or assessing tonight, nothing from building as well. Library, Ms. Francis.
Just one thing, we did have a, a donation that was given to the library by family and friends of Catherine Manns. She passed away in the middle of June. She was a past board member of ours, and so that, that donation provided us to, with new, new furniture, new seating area, reading area, that we're going to, you know, get a plaque made in, in her memory, and honor her service to the board, so. So, that's pretty much it for the library, business as usual.
Excellent, thank you.
That's a good thing.
Fire, Chief Wilsack.
I believe you have a, I guess, kind of a request, this was already approved by you by once already. I'm surprised Striker let it go for so long. We never made a payment to them for our warranty on all the equipment that we bought, and with the audit and everything, we caught it, and this is just a notification to the board. It was in our budget from last year. That's it for me. Well, we're also in the process of hiring a, hopefully these guys turn out, medic-only and a firefighter/EMT. We're in the process of orientation right now.
Good.
Chief Wilsack would be looking for a motion to approve payment of Striker invoice number 3156156M in the amount of $45,230.80 pursuant to the FEMA grant as listed in your packet.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Pro temp Secora, support by Councilwoman Terencey. Any further discussion?
I can't believe they waited so long.
I was going to say. But, yeah, must be nice.
We used it, too.
And I think, if I remember what Mr. Paternoster told me, they didn't come looking for it, we actually discovered that we hadn't paid it.
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Anything further, Chief?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Did you want to mention the firefighters against cancer?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Oh, yeah, McComb Township firefighter, I can't think of his name right now. Joseph Warren? Walked from McComb Township's fire station number two all the way to Grand Rapids, and came through our city. Our guys did a little boot drive, I believe they raised close to $3,900 for him.
Wow.
And, within three hours.
Very nice.
And, I think, I guess Bob Seeger donated like $10,000 to him before he even started the walk. So, I don't know what he wound up making, but unfortunately, we're exposed to a lot of chemicals, and it's firefighter awareness against cancer, so...
It's about $85,000.
Is that what he's up to?
Wow.
This goal was 80.
The amazing part is what I heard on the radio is that he walked with his gear on.
Yeah. I noticed they switch the tennis shoes, though, this year.
Oh, did you?
Those boots aren't made for walking.
Doesn't that have a song?
No, the first year he did that, I watched him walk through, and I'm like, "Oh, you're never going to make it with them boots on, man," because they rub on the back of your heels, so. But, yeah, he's, you know, he's done it, I think it's his third year, so...
That's excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Please, Chief Cody.
Mayor and Council, good evening. We have two items before you today for agenda summaries. The first one I'm going to address is the traffic control order. This is a traffic control order for Greeley and Van Dyke Streets. Some time ago, there's been some new developments in that area. We look to help improve some of the traffic safety in the area because of increased traffic, and new businesses are going to have some new patronage, that are going to be accessing that area by vehicles, and also by pedestrian traffic. So, as a result of that, we had our, our traffic cars kind of monitor the area and get an idea of what's transpiring in that area. And it was, it was also recommended, I might add, to the site review planning for some of the new development in that area, that a sign for eastbound Greeley traffic, as it meets up with Van Dyke, be a right-turn only. If anybody's familiar with that area, the distance between Greeley and Van Dyke is a very short distance. There's people coming southbound on Van Dyke, there's people turning the corners from eastbound Van Dyke to southbound Van Dyke. We also have a center turn lane, which is widely used for access to Canal. So, for somebody to come out of that area and try to access a northbound lane after crossing all of that, is a very busy intersection, would obviously cause some difficulty. We're anticipating an increased traffic as a result of some of the new development, so the traffic control order before you is to ask that it would be right-turn only as you exit Greeley to Van Dyke. And we would ask that the, the council approve that, and we would go forward with putting signage in, so that anybody exiting Greeley would then go southbound on Van Dyke. Does anybody have any questions about that request?
I'll make a motion to approve the request and the traffic control order.
Motion by Mayor Pro temp Secora.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Terencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Ryan?
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Are you looking at making any of the other streets in that, that area where they're entered only?
If I could vote for River Vista.
Yeah, there's been some discussion, we're looking into a number of different options there. Right now, there's a traffic study in place that we're trying to kind of wait for its results, to kind of make an accurate determination as to what's transpiring throughout the neighborhood. We're also kind of waiting to see what type of input we're going to get from some of the residents, to see what or if they want to see changes in their area, to help mitigate some of the additional traffic as well. So, that, that, that's kind of an in-progress, a work in progress, if I might add, so, yep, we're currently working at it.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Mayor and Council, thank you for that. Our next order of business is an agenda item that is involving the purchase of some computers. Sergeant Kloszny worked on this project, and I'll have him explain that to you.
Mayor and Council, good evening. In front of you, the agenda item, what, what we're looking for is, we are notified by our vendor, Clemis, that three of, three of the five in-car computers that we have in our patrol vehicles are actually going to be on a date and not being able to use on their network come January 1st, 2022. So, what's going on is Clemis is moving into the Windows 10 world, and the Windows 11 is, is now coming out, and our current system right now is not compatible with the Windows 10 upgrade, and it's not going to be used on, on the system. So, what we're, what we're looking at is to go ahead and upgrade three of these computers. And, and these computers are really the brainchild of our patrol officers and stuff. They conduct all their daily work inside the vehicle, from taking calls, taking accident reports, responding to scenes, running license plates, everything is done on that inside computer and stuff. The vendor Dell that we're, we're using is a government vendor, this is the vendor that Clemis recommends, and this is, this is who we go with. There isn't any other vendor to go with. This is who they say, this is what works on our network, this is, this is what you're doing. So, what, what we are looking at and what we're requesting is a request to purchase three in-car computers from Dell, and also to purchase three modems through CDW, who is, CDW, who is the vendor. So, I'd be looking for a motion to purchase the three computers and three modems for a total amount of $12,034.54. And we're looking to take this money out of the police vehicles equipment line item, so this is something that's already budgeted for in our police vehicles, and we're not looking for a budget limit to actually increase our police budget. The second motion that I'm looking for is to be able to install this hardware, and that's going to be completed through Clemis for a total amount of $14,000, $1,400.
$1,400, yeah.
Is there any questions?
Sergeant Kloszny would be looking for motion number one, to approve purchase of the computers at a cost of $12,034.54.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilwoman Terencey. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Sergeant Kloszny's second motion would be to authorize the installation by Clemis at a cost of $1,400.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman O'Donnell.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Sikora. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you. Sergeant Kloszny and Chief Cody, do you have anything else?
Just wanted to add, this was an expenditure that was not prepared for at the time of budgeting. We are taking it out of our vehicle equipment fund. We were notified by Clemis that they were going to be changing platforms after our budget was already submitted. So we did make some provisions for that. Obviously, this is a pretty big chunk, but it was unexpected expenditure. We were replacing things as needed. And we already had two cars that had been upgraded due to the life cycle of those computers and their componentry that kind of began to fail. So this is one of those things that we didn't account for, but we did. So we're in good position at this point.
You have the money for it, yep.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Lang, DPW report?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing?
Nope.
Mr. Paternoster? Report from the treasurer, please.
I gotta make a room. Hog doll's face.
Good evening, mayor and council. You should have had in your packet three items that I submitted. The first one is the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget for the sewer and water fund, Fund 592. Normally, we would try to have submitted that in June with the other budgets that we submit for approval. But we got held up on some rate calculations. And so I'm submitting that budget to you tonight. And sorry, I don't have my copy with me.
That's okay.
Looking at a total revenue projection of $3,249,542 and expenditures, or expenses rather, of $3,414,690. The water and sewer fund, as you know, is supported primarily through the levying of water and sewer rates. And so that's the second item that I will be presenting to you. So at this point, I'm asking for a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Terencey. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes.
Want one of these?
No.
Keep on that one.
So the next item is the adoption of the water and sewer rates for the current fiscal year 2022. Our city ordinance requires that those be submitted to the board for approval prior to implementation. The rates consist of two components. There's a ready-to-serve charge and a consumption charge. The ready-to-serve charge is intended to recover fixed costs of the system that we have to pay whether or not anybody turns on their water faucet or flushes their toilet. With regard to the water system, that ready-to-serve charge is determined by the amount of depreciation expense on our infrastructure. With the sewer system, it's based on the annual debt service, the principal and interest, for the sake of the citizens who might be watching. The city itself does not have any outstanding long-term debt. But the Macomb County Wastewater Disposal District and the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor District, both of which the city is a member, have issued numerous bonds for maintenance of the sanitary systems that our effluent flows through to get to the treatment plants in Detroit. So we pay our pro-rata share. I think there are 11 communities that are on the Macomb system and I don't know how many are on the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor District, but I know there shall be Township, Sterling Heights, and the City of Utica, those three communities at least that the system runs through, and we all pay our share of the debt on those. The consumption rate picks up all the other costs of the system, whether that be the consumption rates from Great Lakes Water Authority, the sanitary sewer charges from Macomb Wastewater District, and our own operating expenses, wages, materials, supplies, the maintenance that we have to perform, and any equipment that we have to purchase or maintain. So I'm requesting a motion to approve the rates as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Terencey. Council discussion. I would like to ask Mr. Paternoster, we discussed there were a couple of things that did happen in the city this year, right, that impacted the rates, if I'm not mistaken?
That is true. The main things that impacted our rates, rate increases from Great Lakes Water Authority, from Macomb County Wastewater, an increase in debt issued by Oakland-Macomb Interceptor District. And then within our own operations, we purchased a used Vector to replace our very aged Vector truck. And we have repairs to sanitary lift station pump. I believe it's actually a replacement of a pump that we had to include in the budget. It was about $60,000 total for those two. And that's built into your consumption charge.
I have a question. So, I mean, I looked at this, but I couldn't tell you exactly how much did our rates go up so that the residents that are watching aren't in shock when they get their bills? You know, the rates did in fact go up, correct?
I believe it was approximately 4%, between 4% and 6%.
Okay.
The sanitary sewer rate went up more than the water rate did.
Of course.
In fact, the ready-to-serve charge on the water side actually dropped by 2 cents for a 5/8 meter.
Okay.
Not, nobody's going to notice that 2 cents, I can assure you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? We all know the history of our water rate increases and changing our city ordinance to require transparency, more transparency in the process of how we determine water rates. It's a painful process, but it's a necessary process as we strive to only charge our residents for the actual costs, to provide them the water and to maintain the systems that do the providing of the water. So I'm pleased that we are now, you know, taking deep dives into the numbers every year. It's never easy to have to tell the residents that rates are going up. I am pleased that they're not going up very much, much less than some other communities that neighbor Utica. But thank you, Mr. Paternoster. I know it's a lot of work to put these numbers together and to give us an accurate accounting for running our system. So thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no further discussion?
Again, the department is DPW. Also, thank you to you and your department to running it as efficiently as you can. So.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the mention of the Vector truck that we purchased, yes, it's a cost and, you know, it gets factored into our rates. But the long-term savings of all that hard work you did to find that truck, to procure that truck, that's going to provide the residents with much more long-term savings than the small cost that, you know, issue. So thank you for that, too. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. And your last item, Mr. Paternoster.
The last item is a formality. The police and fire pension system annually must submit to the council a certification of the employee, rather, the employer contribution rates for the police and fire employees who are in the Act 345 system. You have in your packet a memo from myself and a copy of the resolution, I believe, from the 345 pension system identifying the rates that were to be required for fiscal year 2022. I apologize, this coming in in September, it was actually prepared to be submitted in the July council packet and somehow I failed to get it to the clerk. So no fault of hers. That's why it's in here. It's just a formality to certify the rates to the board.
I will make the motion that we receive and file the fiscal year 2022 certification of contribution rates.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Sikora. Any discussion? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paternoster. Ma'am clerk, a report from administration, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. I have submitted to you the marijuana caregiver license fee. Per the ordinance, council must determine the application and renewal fee. The ordinance number 173 was published and is active as of August 25th, 2021. And I, we are asking for council to set the application fee and the renewal fee at $1,500. We have taken that from surrounding communities, so it's not deterring them or asking them to come into our city based on cost.
I think that fee was actually established by Shelby Township, and I don't think the cost is any different to the city than it would be to the township.
Yep.
Should it be higher? I mean, we don't have to be equal. We don't have to be low. In this case, higher is maybe better. I mean, I have no problem saying it's $2,000 or $2,500. Then it really is a deterrent.
I mean, you can't set a fee to create a deterrent, though.
Okay.
So I would suggest that probably $1,500. We can review it in a year to see if it's covering whatever cost the city have in relation to it.
What about $2,000? What about $1,800? We're a small city. We need money. We're not Shelby Township or Sterling Heights.
I already created the form. It's very easy to change the number before we publish it.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have to be equal to anybody else. Somebody is always going to be higher. So I'll go and say, make it $1,800. So we're not extravagantly high. We're not looking to do what Linda said I'm doing.
I didn't say that.
Well, okay, implied, maybe, suggested. So I would opt to say change it at least $1,800.
I'll support that, since I threw it out there.
That sounds like a motion by Mayor Protem Sikora and support by Councilwoman Terencey. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Just for the record, the motion was to set the fee at $1,800.
$1,800, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sikora?
Yes.
Terencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion, Ryan, Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Anything else to report today?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, Ms. Kearns.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just wanted to kind of come to you with the last couple of months of what's transpired in the Parks and Rec. We did vote to raise the pavilion rental beginning 2022 for non-Utica-Shelby residents. Clarifying again, Utica and Shelby, their rates will stay the same. Non-residents will be $200. Now, we feel that, you know, we've had it at the same for a while. So we did vote and that was motion. We will be participating in the Meet Me on the Trails on September 25th from 10:00 to 2:00 with signs pointing toward the community garden. So hopefully that'll get us some, you know, recognition of what we're trying to do in the Parks and Rec. We are also participating in the Trunk or Treat with Stony Creek Church. And I'm very happy to announce that we did get some money coming in from the car show. We'll have those totals for you next month. They're still being accounted for. So we're working it as we can and just trying to, you know, stay up and keep in front of everybody and let them know that we are here. So that's all I have.
Good job.
Yes, thank you. No reports from the Historic District Commission. Ms. McRae, City Attorney?
No news is good news when it comes to legal.
I will take that. At this point in the meeting, we open the floor to communication from the public for any item that is not on the agenda. Ms. Kearns?
And I'll tell you where the Red Solo Cup came in handy for my next thing. Lynn Kearns, 8310 Hall Road, president of Women's Life Chapter 911. Here before you, first of all, I'm very, very pleased to be a part of Utica. You get police and fire, you don't know what it meant to Joe Warren for being out. I'm a huge advocate for Joe and I will do anything for him to raise money and help the Walk for Red. So thank you on behalf of myself. I am actually seeking approval for signs to go out for our October 16th walk that was approved at Grant Park. And that walk is benefiting Women's Life, Neighbors United, which is Joe Warren's organization, as well as a Mission of Love, Childhood Cancer. Looking for four signs, 18 by 24s, at both entrances of Grant Park and then the corner of Hawn and Van Dyke to go out on October 8th. And then we'll pull them down on the 16th. The second part of my ask, I guess, is on Friday, October 15th, I'm looking for approval to use some Red Solo Cups to do kind of a little fence thing that says Walk for Love, just to kind of bring a little bit more, you know, intrigue to the walk when people walk up. So I am looking for approval for that.
And where would that be, Ms. Kearns, right, on the tennis courts or something?
On the tennis courts, yes. And we'd like to put them up Friday evening. That way, you know, we have enough to do on Saturday morning, if we could do that.
We don't usually make motions during public comments. Is there anything that would prohibit us from doing that?
You know, I'm trying to review the ordinance right now with regard to dimensions and locations, but without having the information prior to the meeting, I don't, you know, can't have an opinion on the spot.
The signs meet what the ordinance are. They're her regular signs that she uses for regular events, so that the sign size is not an issue.
Same ones. It's the same signs that you've always used, correct? So we have used these signs before.
Yeah, they're the 18 by 24s.
Mainly for your flea markets, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not even sure that a permit's required of them if it meets a sidebar, that's correct.
She's.
She must have been the right of way.
Yeah. She will need approval.
Can we possibly make vote subject to legal review?
Sure.
So this way it's not delayed.
We don't want to delay it, yeah.
If it passes, it passes.
This could have been brought to us on the October meeting as well, right?
Uh, no, your meeting's after the event. And I apologize, I did not get it to you prior to. prior to, because I was actually hospitalized myself, so I didn't get it to you, so.
Based on what's there, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Solo Cups and the fence and the signage that has been used in the past. Again, subject to legal review is if it meets our ordinances.
I'll support that.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilman O'Donnell. Any further discussion?
No, I think those look nice.
And they are actually printed signs. They're not handwritten.
No, like the thing in the, that's kind of fun.
Yeah, it's cute.
And before you plant the signs, could you call the city office and make sure that Ms. McGrail has cleared everything?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion Ryan Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the public? Mr. Lang.
Not so much from the public, but public works, just something came to mind. Mayor Council, if you recall, during our SAW grant process, in the review of the sewer system and the storm system, when HRC was in and they presented the findings of the whole study, we had that god-awful picture on the very first page of the utility board through the center of our sewer. That's actually been repaired. It was identified whose utility it was, and that was actually the shutdown that occurred very quickly. We apologize for you not knowing, but I kind of went with the idea of by the time you figure out who it was, we'll be done and it'll all be over. So we did manage to get it done before the car show. That was the weekend they were looking to do it. It actually was a utility affiliated with MDOT, so they picked up all the costs and everything and coordinated. But we managed to get that taken care of at no cost to the city. So that, if you ever happen to think of it, if you would, you know, it's done. It's fixed, though.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Cuddington, good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Chuck. Chuck Cuddington, 44828 Utica Road. I just wanted to say, we had a great car show this year. I don't know if anybody's mentioned it, but I thought it was the best we've ever had. And a lot of thanks to all the volunteers, but I just wanted to mention it so everybody knows that it turned out to be very good this year. Thank you.
Thank you. That looks like all the comments from the public. At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Sikora, support by Councilwoman Terrencey. No discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion Ryan Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.